All right, councilors, thank you for joining us. Everyone, I will call to order the work session of Wilsonville City Council for January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at five P. M. And I'll start by asking for a review of the agenda and items on consent. Any comments? Okay, seeing none, are there any councilor concerns before we start our work session? Seeing none, we'll move to the first item on our pre-council work session, which is with Ms. Villagrona with the city H. R. and benefits department to talk about the trip insurance for the delegation going to Kitakata, Japan to visit our sister city on the thirty-fifth anniversary.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank your councilors for allowing us some time at this work session. I'll try not to take too much of your time before Alicia, who is also online with us. Alicia Johnson with Assured Partners is one of our consultants in not only insurance that we provide for, say, casualty or property liability, but then also for special occasions such as this, where we are sending a large group over to, or a group over to Japan. And it's a trip that's much like if you take your own personal trip, you might want some some trip insurance that provides you with some assurances when you are traveling. And Alicia is going to go over the details and provide you with some, maybe some frequently asked questions and answers, and then you might have some time also to ask her questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Andrea. So yes, my name is Alicia Johnson. I work with Assured Partners, been helping the city for about ten years on all matters of risk. And so we had these conversations about three, four months ago, talking about your trip to Japan and what that would entail. So there's a coverage out there. It's called business travel accident insurance. And what that does is it helps people when you're traveling more or less for a business, so not just personal, so with a larger group, but for a business-related reason, to cover any accident, sickness, there are other parts, our death and dismemberment as well. But it's basically a very full, robust policy that helps you in the event that as you're traveling, you run into any issues as far as lost luggage, you lose your wallet, and you need help, you know, finding your passport at the consulate, or you need help with those types of services. And it also helps in the event that you were sick and you needed help finding a doctor or medical attention, or if you were actually injured and you needed to come back to the United States. So there's a whole program that covers that. And we completed an application with a carrier called A. I. G. There's a few carriers that play in that space, but A. I. G. is one that I recommend because of the vast amount of resources that they have, and it's also called their concierge service. So as that process goes through, we will have options for both Andrea and Gina to review, to make a decision on, but what that would look like is assistance for that team when they travel. So it covers employees, it covers councilors, it covers anyone on the trip, including spouses. It would also cover people if they're staying longer, right? So the trip we're looking at is about nine days. If someone wanted to take a detour, either before or after, we would just ask for a little more information, but that would be covered. And the thought is, is that as you're going on a trip, right? So as soon as you cross through your threshold of your primary residence or where you're staying to the trip, and then as you come back to the, through your threshold, that's what constitutes the trip, and this coverage would respond for you. So it's not meant to cover every element, but it is meant to cover and supplement so that as you're traveling, you have a resource. Once we do choose the limits and the full program, we would send out more or less like an auto identification card, but basically an identification card. And with that, we would say it's best to take a picture of your passport, take a picture of this card laminated, have it in your wallet or your luggage, so that if you did have any need while you are traveling, we would have kind of like a duplicate and copies of that. They also have a very neat program where if you would like, you don't have to, you can download an app, and the app allows you to look at all those different resources. You can upload the different details of your trip, you know, where, you know, local consulate is, where kind of like locations are, so that as you're traveling, you would know at any time, oh, I need to go report something, or I need, you know, help with the local authorities. You would know how to get there. And so that is an option for you, and you can also start a claim that way. So it's just a really neat feature. Trying to see what else. But really, what this program is meant to do is just to help you be the coordinator of care in the event that something happens while you're, while you're traveling. There may be any questions or areas that I could kind of talk through a little bit more about the program?
I have a question.
I do, too.
If a person wanted to add services, you know, for that extra trip or something, is there a way to get that cost so that that can be paid separately?
Yeah, great question. So as long as it's within, I believe, the ranges seven to eleven days, and it's within a certain geographical area, there's no additional charge. The carrier likes to know that information, just so as they, they do plot and plat where their insureds are over the world. In the event that if there is any type of threat, so whether foreign threat, they already know that they're going to be responding to that. So I don't believe it would be a cost. The indications that we got back, I think it was November, late November, was going to be, I mean, roughly a thousand dollars. So from a stand, like, a cost standpoint for the entire trip, it should not be that much money. And I don't think that they would allocate that out unless it's, you know, a bigger trip.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm a little confused because I think the airline travel insurance was already purchased by the city for some of the people who were going. And then some of us bought a separate policy, which we've already purchased and paid for. So I, I'm confused about whether this is something that, as individuals, we would pay for and cancel the other policy, or I mean, obviously, this is less expensive than the travel insurance that I think we purchased for the other portion of our trip. And I'm not sure whether it's just, is it just accident, or, or is it coverage for if we, you know, if something happened and we couldn't, we couldn't go?
Yeah, great question. Yeah, so this is on business travel accidents, really just for while you're, while you're going for that air element. It's not trip cancellation coverage. And that's something that we, we, we don't have the ability to offer in the state of Oregon. So that would be like a personal buying decision for yourself in the event that you weren't able to go. Those costs are a little bit higher because the likelihood is higher because it's more individualized versus with a group. If this group is going, right, and there's eleven of you, and I know it could be one or two off, but you're also there to support each other, and everyone's going together. But yeah, that would be a personal decision. And if you would like, I can take a look at the policy that you purchased and line it up with the one that we're looking at, and say what areas would or would not be duplicated, just so that you could make that decision.
So Andrea, is this being presented as an option for individuals to purchase versus the city purchasing this?
This is something when we started talking about sending the delegation over to Kitakata that we wanted to look into what the cost would be for providing this insurance for the number of people that were going to be going. And it's something that if we choose to, to take, take that step further and purchase the actual policy, it's something that the city would, would, that cost the city would incur.
The goal just to be to help, you know, in the event that something were to happen. And I know that you'll have your sister city and their team there as well. But this, again, just helps with coordination of care. So, for example, if you're all touring and someone slips and falls and breaks their ankle, right? You want to make sure that a U. S. medical doctor talks to the, the coordination of care because sometimes you do need to be flown back for surgery. Other times, it's not advisable to be flown back. So there's a lot of different elements, and again, it's just to protect you from a safety standpoint. These are rarely used as far as policies, and we did talk through that. And that's why the cost is so low from a group standpoint. But the, the other piece that you brought up as far as the personnel and the trip cancellation, those are more common that people have that issue. That's why those premiums comparatively are a little bit higher. I think they're anywhere between four to five hundred dollars.
This was really a matter of how do we ensure that we're providing you with the resources to have a, if something happens, to have a safe trip and a safe voyage home as well? Like, having the ability, as Alicia was saying, have a doctor from the U. S. communicate with the, the care coordinators and figure out what your best steps are as far as your care if something happens. It's always the what-if, right? So this is, you know, insurance we buy for the what-ifs in hope that we never have to use it, right? And so that's the main reason that we wanted to look into providing a policy such as this so we could ensure that the group that goes over is safe.
Well, it sounds like it's very affordable, especially compared to if there wasn't anything and something happened.
Yes, very true, and there is a little bit of
Insurance.
Yeah, and there is a little bit of repatriation coverage. So in the event that there was ever an emergency political element or anything like that, they would fly you home. And there is also translation. So in the event that you're trying to speak with somebody and there's not someone to help you. So basically, if you were to get lost, right? And you're like, I'm not familiar with, you know, my area, I need help. You could use that app, press the button, they would ask you questions, and then point you to the right direction, something that Andrea and our team wouldn't be able to do because we're not familiar. Yeah, yeah.
Is this conversation to get our input, whether or not to move forward? Or is it just a presentation that, about this type of insurance?
It was mainly to allow you all any, some time to ask any questions that you might have regarding this insurance. And some things that come up a lot are, you know, what happens if I lose my luggage? Or what happens if I lose my wallet, those types of things? And so we just wanted to make, and we, we are planning on purchasing a policy. You still need to go through what the specifics of that policy will be with Alicia and go through the quotes. But we wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to ask these questions, and also to let you know that this insurance will be available while you're on your trip.
Well, I really, really appreciate the presentation because I was thinking about purchasing it on my own. I, I know my family has used it in the past, and I know other people that have used it in the past. If it's not expensive, it seems like it's really something we should have.
Yes, and then the other element that we've been talking about is just understanding, and we are working on like a F. A. Q. just to help you. But like also, what do you do as you prepare for the trip? Just to make sure you have the proper documents that you leave duplicates of stateside, what you do when you're there, just so that in, at the time of an event, we already know what to do. It may not be perfect, but at least we have a game plan, and there's a way for someone to support you. So we thought if we could just be educational at first, that it would be more beneficial as questions come up, and Andrea can send all the questions to me, and we can just work through that.
And one question here, I think that you probably said this right at the beginning, but just to confirm this, we have some members from the Kitakata Committee that will also be in the delegation, and this extends to, to these committee volunteer members as well, correct?
No, so it wouldn't cover them, but it would cover like, so if, you know, I know you have employees that are going. We have counsel, we have, you know, other family members or spouses. It covers all of them traveling as the group. So one of the elements, as we fill out the application, it's called class eligibility. And we put in there that, you know, board of directors, we put volunteers, guests. Board of directors would also be equivalent to councilors, guests, so that anybody traveling with your party would have access to the group. The delegation in, in Japan, they would rely upon their own, if they have workers' comp or the equivalency of that, or whatever they're using in their volunteering capacity. So we still have the separation of the entities. This is just your group that's going, but it doesn't have to only be appointed, elected, or employees of.
I see. I think, and to clarify then, when I said the Kitakata Committee, we have a committee here in the U. S. that are members of the Wilsonville community that are part of our sister city. So, but you are saying that these volunteer committee members would be covered because they are part of our delegation?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had forgotten about that. Yeah.
Okay, sure. I, I would just want to make sure that they are also covered. And I assume then that this would, you know, if something did happen, it would help the city in terms of liability if, if something happened.
It is, I mean, the number one thing is to protect you and to offer you services, but then it is also a public relations element that if you were stranded or injured, that we, we, we just have a course of action, and we thought through all those pieces. So it is fairly common when we're doing any type of international travel. I mostly work with it with the universities where we're, we've got, you know, lots of, of lives kind of all over the world, this is what they purchase. And again, it's for protection. It gets used, at least where I see, maybe three or four times a year, based on maybe about fifteen hundred travelers a year, like people traveling internationally. So there is some, but where you're going, it's really the injury that I see that are going to be a sickness or a slip and fall, and you injure your ankle or your arm or something of that nature.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So Alicia, I have another question. In deciding about whether, there are several of us that are going to stay through the nineteenth, which is a seventeen-day
Seventeen-day, okay.
trip. And if we choose to keep our insurance, which we've already paid for, would it be less expensive for the city than if they didn't have to cover some of the members? Is it a per-person kind of charge?
No, right now, we're actually at the minimum premium for the policy, so it really wouldn't matter. And just to clarify, when you say the seventeen-day, so it's basically, if our trip is nine days and you're extending it, but I, I'm sorry, I don't have it to memory. I think it's ten or so days. So total would be nineteen days, you would still be fine within that. But maybe you would just disclose that, and then, like I said, I can take a look at the policy that you purchased and see what the differences are to see if it's worthwhile for you, or yeah, if you're able to cancel. But we can talk through that piece.
Okay, yeah. All right. I just wondered if it was, if we decided, if it would save the city money, you know, if it, so it doesn't really, it's really kind of a blanket of the, the entire delegation, so.
Yeah, the number one element, so they look at the number of, of people going, right? So my initial number was eleven people. So even if that went up to twenty-five, there's probably not a difference. And the majority of the exposure is where you're going. So Japan is not highly volatile, right? So comparatively, so. Yeah, I wouldn't see a change in premium.
Okay, thank you.
I think the group size might be a little smaller, but I don't think it's getting bigger.
And that's fine, the fluctuation, this is not an auditable policy where they would come back and actually, you know, check to see how many people. It's just written more as a blanket.
Well, thank you. It seems like a very efficient, prudent way to manage risk. And thank you. Is anybody have, if we don't have any more questions? We look forward to getting your F. A. Q.
Right, it's almost done. We just wanted to make sure if there's any other questions I could embed that into there. But I'll kind of finalize it and polish it up, and then send it back over for Andrea to share.
Thank you very much.
If you do have any additional questions that come up, or if you would like, as Alicia said, for her to compare a, a policy that you've already purchased to this particular policy, please feel free to email me, call me, and I will make sure that Alicia gets that information.
All right, thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you. Good night.
Oh, okay, so we'll move to our next item, which is about the Stafford Sixty-Fifth Elexon Intersection update. And we have detail on this in our packet.
All right, good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and Council. My name is Zach Weigl, city engineer, and on the consent agenda at the regular session tonight, there's a I. G. A. with Clackamas County for a roundabout, for the city to participate in a, the design and construction of a roundabout at the Elexon Stafford Sixty-Fifth Intersection. And just wanted to give you kind of a brief update about this project. This kind of came out of the blue. We've been talking with Clackamas County about doing a conceptual design, participating in conceptual design for a number of years. And then all of a sudden, this project has become a priority. So just a little bit of background, you can see on the map here, the blue, the blue square kind of shows the location. I'm sure you're all very familiar with this intersection. Little bit strange, it's located outside of the city limits, just outside of the city limits, but very important to Wilsonville's traffic flow. So you can see in the kind of left-hand corner there that we made as part of the Beckman Road closure that's coming up here next week, we installed a temporary traffic signal and some stop sign improvements to that intersection. But now Clackamas County is moving forward with the ultimate need for that intersection, which is a roundabout. So happy to answer any questions, any feedback you have for me as we, you know, enter into the design of this project. The city with this I. G. A. will be able to participate on, on the design team, and, and we'll also be contributing about a million dollars to the project, which the payment, the first payment wouldn't occur until about two years from now. So happy to answer any questions about the project.
Well, I just, I did want to comment on it. We have been talking about this for so long. I remember when I was on the council for just four years, starting in two thousand and thirteen, we had people come to visit us about the risk of this. You know, you know, we hear about this all the time, the, the problems and risk associated with this. And over the years, about how it would be so difficult to make any progress because it's so multi-jurisdictional. And I believe, and we knew that Clackamas County had put it on a project list, but I think this is just really fantastic that they have decided to move into the design phase and allocate funds for it. Where would the funds have been drawn from? Do you know that, Zach?
So the funding that the city is providing is coming from our transportation system development charges. Because, because this project is in our transportation system plan, we do collect system development charges from development to contribute to the project.
And I think, I mean, I realize we have to do the design, and then, then the biggest hurdle is to figure out how to construct it, which is another thing altogether. But what about Clackamas County? Where would they, how would they have funded this, do you know?
Their design, their design funds are, I believe, are mostly coming from the vehicle registration fee.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the, you know, that, the, the big outcome of this design work is getting that real construction cost estimate and being able to figure out that construction funding on their end. The I. G. A. for Wilsonville does go all the way through project completion, including construction.
Any other questions?
So if we have project, if the cost increases, because it does take a couple of years, right? We're looking at a couple of years out, and we've seen that, you know, the cost of things is increasing so rapidly. But that wouldn't necessarily affect what we budgeted or agreed to in this I. G. A. that's being presented to us, correct?
That's correct, yeah. The, the I. G. A. is just for a million dollars total. That's about what we projected we would collect in system development charges. So, yeah, it would have to, any change to that number would require an amendment to the I. G. A.
Okay.
So in, go ahead.
Well, no, you go ahead, because my, my, my comment was a little different, different.
I was just going to say that in the many meetings of the C. Four, which is the Clackamas Cities Coalition, and also in, I think, metro, transportation, planning, various such meetings, we have brought this up so many times, and I'm just really encouraged that it's being brought to a design phase.
Yeah, and I was just going to add, and I think that there's a lot of interest, public interest in this project. And even just after the last civics academy that the, all of council members spoke at and kind of did an introduction at, I had some questions about this specific project because, you know, that intersection is, it's, has a lot of attention for people that live within Wilsonville. So I wondered, I know that, you know, community development, all the different departments have, have times where they're able to talk with the civics academy. And I wondered if this was going to be something that might be covered in your presentation? Because I think there's a lot of questions from people about, you know, why hasn't this happened sooner, or, or even confusion on, wait, is it inside the city or outside the city? And if it's outside the city, why did the city help with the traffic light? Or, you know, but not a, you know, not fixing it earlier, or, you know, just kind of understanding where those lines are and why things have played out the way that they have so far? Just, just kind of a, a little reflection on some of the questions that I have heard, you know, over the last several weeks on this. But this project has a much longer history than several weeks, although I think that the general public has, has had more news and information about it over the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, we are actually just preparing our presentation for civics academy coming up. So, yeah, that's, we will definitely be including this project. We always get a lot of questions about this intersection, like you mentioned, at, at civics academy. So we, we will have good news to share at this, this one.
Excellent.
Well, I really appreciate your comments, Council President Ockrevall, because, I mean, we say this at our meetings, I realize everybody does not attend all of the meetings of the city council. They have many other things to do. But, but we have talked about how this is, this is a perfect example of how the relationships between the city councilors and our staff with our jurisdictional partners is so important because we just stayed on this for a long time. I know Mayor Knapp worked on it. It's been a very long-term pressure in, in bringing this up in various venues with the county and metro and other partners about the importance of this, because, yes, more housing is needed in all these regions, and we are building housing, so on and so forth. But that doesn't mean that we have control of how Washington County or Clackamas County decides to spend its money. We are not commissioners of those counties. And so it's a matter of getting to know people, bringing this up, also taking the input that we receive from our residents, and that makes a big difference. It, when people come to us and tell us of their concerns, that really makes a big difference, and we carry that forward as well. So again, it's not going to be fixed right away, but this is absolutely the, the best next step. And that brings me, since Zach, we have you on the meeting right now. Somebody asked me a question just yesterday about the Beckman Dip Bridge project. There was a short story in the paper, which I really appreciated, that describes the project. I have it here on my desk someplace. But again, that's a really huge project, and every story can't carry the entire history. But I was asked to highlight, again, the genesis for needing to correct the Beckman Dip with that bridge. And while we have you on, on correct the Beckman Dip with that bridge. And while we have you on, on the meeting, could you describe the, this, this, the rules and, and the, the 20 years ago when it was decided to be developed and, and what state and other traffic rules come into play when you have such a geographical fixture as the Beckman Dip and why, why this big effort was needed, was required of us?
Yes, that is, there's quite a history of all that decision-making, but it really comes down to the Beckman Canyon Creek intersection is at capacity or near beyond capacity. And to, you know, it's a stop-controlled intersection right now. So to make that either a signal or a roundabout to improve capacity, that means cars are no longer stopping. They can go right through. And there just isn't enough, because of the dip, there's just not enough space to be able to see far enough and stop if there's something in the road. So it's a safety, safety issue. And the only way to correct that is to raise up the dip, the dip to a higher elevation to get, so you can see far enough to stop in time. I'm hoping that's making sense.
It does make sense because I've heard it many times and I've had the privilege of going to about 35 meetings about it. But if there's a way to do some kind of a snapshot of what you just described and have it in the materials, I think that would be helpful because it's the whole gen- and it's also as we develop and build all that, as I recall, housing, the schools, and you're just having more traffic that comes along with having more housing. It was identified many years ago that in order to do that, we have to correct that safety problem.
Yeah, that's correct. And I, I will pass that on to the, to the project team and we will definitely get that information out.
Okay. Since, you know, as it goes on, you focus on the fine details of the project, but not the history and origin so much. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any other questions about this item, which was on our consent agenda?
I, I have two comments. So on this last topic about the roundabouts for the dip, when, instead of just using words, if you can have drawings or photos or photos that are amended with drawings on top, that's always, pictures speak a thousand words. And that's always helpful, especially when you're talking to laypersons. And then back to the Stafford Elegian intersection, I know that this project has been in, you know, in planning for a long time, but I think people are becoming more and more aware with the tolling discussions with the number, they're thinking now more in the future of how many cars can be on this road. And I'd just like to have confirmation that the design is taking that into account. I'm, I'm sure it is, but I just want to hear it one more time that with the number of cars that they're projecting or thinking that could happen if that's going to still be workable for that intersection.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be working with Clackamas County on, on the design and the future and accommodating the future conditions. So there's, you know, there's not a lot of data yet on what those numbers would be, but there will be enough capacity to accommodate future conditions.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on this topic before we go on to the next one? I'm not seeing any, so, and please let me know if I miss seeing somebody's hand. Appreciate that. And so thank you, Zach. And we'll now move to item C about the city charter, the term limits. And before you start, I'll say that I've received or we've received some more emails from the community about this looking for the, the research that, that we've been doing, which started with some requests from the community several months ago. So our city attorney is going to take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Amanda Guile-Hinman, City Attorney. I'm going to pull up a PowerPoint here real quick. I apologize if you hear my dog barking in the background. I'm taken back to COVID times of doing remote meetings at home. The usual home interruptions. Okay, so tonight we are discussing term limits, the council term limits. Based, as the mayor said, based on some community feedback that, or input that we had received back in March of 2023 regarding the current term limits in our city charter. So by way of background, in 2019, the city received an initiative about initiative to amend the charter to establish term limits. And how those term limits are structured is basically no person can serve more than 12 years in any position on council, whether it's a councillor or as mayor in a 20-year period. And that was really, that language is modeled after a similar initiative that occurred in Tuolton in 2016. So the language is, is basically identical. In 2023, members of the community came to a city council meeting and requested that the council consider an amendment to distinguish they may, the mayoral terms from the council terms. And again, similarly, Tuolton considered something of this nature back in May of 2022 on where the city council referred a ballot measure to somewhat separate the mayoral terms from the, from councillor terms. So when these community members came to the council, there were several things that they noted as concerns with how our cart, our charter is currently structured with the current term limits. First thing that they noted, or one of the things that they noted is that it's that these term limits, especially lumping the mayoral term limits and the councillor term limits together, is no longer creating that consistency in the city's presence in local, regional and statewide issues. I mean, you think in that, particularly now, we just had a conversation about Clackamas County and a regional transportation issue. You think about statewide housing issues and Wilsonville plays a very prominent role in a lot of these issues because of this consistency that our councilors have and our mayor has on serving on different boards and, and committees throughout the region and state. The second thing that the community members noted was that this is, that the current charter can lead to a lack of experienced leadership. So, which can cause, basically what happens is it causes a likely future of just one-term mayors. So if a city councillor currently, if a city councillor serves two terms, or, you know, if they're an off-cycle councillor, if they serve one and a half terms, they'd only be able to serve one term as mayor. And in a lot of cases, I think our council can speak to this, is getting up to speed on everything that's going on in the city and the region and the state takes some time. And so you know, kind of getting your feet under you to feel, you know, like you have the experience to potentially serve as mayor, that can really limit how long a person can serve as mayor with, with the current term limits, the way they are. A third thing that the community members noted was that the mayor's role is different in scope to council members. There's a lot more emphasis put on what the mayor, the committees the mayor serves on and the different roles and responsibilities the mayor has than, than other councillors. The fourth thing that they noted, and actually the fourth and fifth items kind of go together, it's really about how the terms are defined or how the years of service are defined in the current charter. Basically what, the way the years are defined, and we'll get into how they're defined. It really is penalizing members of the council who are appointed to fill in a, a term, an existing vacancy where that limits how many times that they can run. It actually effectively takes away one of the three terms that they could serve. And then also, as I'll, as I'll explain in more detail, there's really some confusion about the language regarding these partial terms, these appointments and, and filling of vacancies that may warrant at least a discussion amongst the council about whether and if so, how the council may propose taking a ballot measure to the public for some clarification. So with that, from that, that community member input, the council had directed staff to go do some research and come back with, you know, with the research and, and how, so the council can have an informed discussion about what, if anything, this council wants to do as far as putting forward a ballot measure. So I want to start with the Tuolton approach because both the initiative that occurred back in 2016 for Tuolton, the 2019 initiative for Wilsonville was essentially modeled off of that, and also Tuolton recognized similar issues that we're now hearing from our community. They were also informed by community members that led to the referendum that they put forward to do the separation of the mayoral terms from the councillor terms. So what Tuolton did, and it's in your packet materials, the, the exact language, but essentially they said they kept the 12-year within a 20-year time, the 12-year limit within 20 years of service. But they carved out an exception that any councillor who has served two consecutive terms can also then serve two additional consecutive terms as mayor. So essentially it increased it from 12 years to 16 years that somebody could serve on council if it was two terms as councillor and two terms as mayor. So eight and eight. They, the council, the Tuolton City Council considered that and referred it to the voters in there on the May 2022 ballot, and it did pass with over 54% approval. In the voter's pamphlet, there were no, there were only arguments submitted in favor and no arguments submitted, submitted in opposition to, to that ballot measure. The next approach that I want to discuss, that's also in your council packet, is the Tigard approach. Now I will note that Tigard's proposed, as, as of right now, it sounds like Tigard will be putting this potentially on its May 2024 ballot, on the May 2024 ballot. So this is not, this is their proposal for a new charter. This is not what their current charter states. So they are proposing a new charter, and when I say a new charter, I mean, they're looking to repeal their current charter and replace it with a whole new one, which is not what Tuolton did. Tuolton just made an amendment to its term limits language. But what they're proposing as with regard to term limits is very similar to Tuolton in that they are looking at carving out an exception where a councillor can serve two terms, so eight years, as councillor and then also serve two terms as mayor. They do an additional change, which where they're defining what a term is and they're defining it, they're proposing to define it as serving more than three years. So it kind of is trying to address the issue of when there's an appointment for a partial term or, you know, filling of a vacancy, that that doesn't count against that person who's filling that vacancy and limiting them to one less full term than they would otherwise be allowed if they hadn't accepted that appointment. So I have two discussion points that I want to discuss with council. I'll, I'll kind of provide a preview of them both and then we'll get into discussion one and then go to the second discussion. So the first discussion is going to be about the council discussing whether it wants to consider referring a ballot measure regarding mayoral term limits where, you know, potentially it's separating out the mayoral term from a council term. The second discussion item that we're going to, that we'll talk about is whether the council has an appetite for, for clarifying what a term is or what years of service are. And so really, those would be two separate issues. They're two, they're within the same part of our charter, but because they're dealing really with two separate changes to the language, I'd really recommend if council wants to do that, that they would, that it would be done as separate ballot measures. So I'll start first with this discussion item number one of just, of considering the referral of the ballot measure regarding mayoral term limits. So what staff's looking for as far as direction is, you know, does council, is council interested in looking at putting forward a ballot measure, a referendum, or referring a ballot measure to the voters to separate out that mayoral, mayoral terms from councillor terms? If so, how long? And if so, you know, is council looking to potentially model it after another city, like for example, Tuolton or Tigard, since those are very recent and recent examples and kind of cities in similar situations to the city council or to our city charter. So Mayor, if you want to call on people?
Being a work session, it's not quite as formal, so I'm going to, you know, encourage people to just share the floor.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So the Tuolton ballot, you said they, it passed by 54%? Was that a regular November? Or was that midterm like in May?
It was a May, yeah, it was May 2022, so it was a primary.
And did you have a chance to talk with people at Tuolton or, or was it just basically researching paperwork?
Um, I, it was generally researching paperwork. The, the city attorney who led that effort basically did a lot of the language for that is no longer at Tuolton anymore.
I'm just wondering, you know, if it was very controversial before they put it on the ballot.
Well, I can at least tell you from my perspective as a Tuolton resident, it was not very controversial.
Well, that's good to know. Thank you.
It didn't get a lot of press, I, I guess I would say.
Yeah.
So, Your Honor, I have some comments. First of all, I want to make it very clear that I do not support removal of term limits as it relates to either the council terms or the mayoral terms. So I want to, I want to make that clear. But I do support separating out the mayoral term from the council terms. And I have some rationale that I've thought about for consideration. In our city, unlike some other cities, our citizens get to vote on city councillors separate from the mayor. In some jurisdictions, the mayor is actually determined by the council because all the council members are voted on together. That is not the case in the city of Wilsonville. Excuse me. Our positions are voted upon by our citizens as separate positions. Separate for councillors, separate for mayor. I also would like to add that the functions, in my opinion, the functions of councillor and, and I, I have been in the position of a city councillor long enough to see two different mayors in our, in our city. And it is my perception that the functions of the city councillors as opposed to the mayor, both as defined in our charter, as well as in practical terms, are very different and distinct positions with different roles and responsibilities. And so to tie council experience as a part of mayoral term is, is unreasonable from my perspective. As a practical matter, I believe that the time and effort of the mayor and the councillors being so different warrants that consideration. My observation has been that the mayor spends between 25 and 30 and upwards of 30 to 35 hours per week in that role, including roles and responsibilities in regional and local and statewide committees, boards and other positions in representing our, the city of Wilsonville. Whereas the councillor spent on an average of about 10 hours per week, and I think that's generous, unless we happen to have a city council meeting that goes till almost 11 o'clock at night, which we have had on occasion. Tying the years spent in the councillor position to the mayoral terms, in my opinion, is irrelevant. And it warrants separation and puts the city in jeopardy, as our city attorney indicated, of having the possibility of having the possibility of a one-term mayor, which does not serve, I think, our city well. And I'm not talking about individuals, I'm talking about what is in the best interest of our city. And that is lack of consistency as well as developing the relationships, the required relationships with our regional and statewide partners, including our elected, other elected officials to get the kind of status and respect that the mayor from Wilsonville deserves. The councillor, I would, here are my recommendations. That the councillor term limits be changed to two four-year terms in a in a twenty-year period. And that the mayor term limits be changed to two four-year terms in a twenty-year period. And that there is a removal of the councillor terms as applying to any of the mayor term limits. I also would recommend removal of partial terms for definition of years of service. I believe that in our charter, there is already language which limits the amount of time that a an appointed councillor or mayor may serve before a biennial election would force them to go to the electorate to be officially elected. So I believe that is already in place. And I I just want to be clear that th- this is not for me. I mean, I I have served an eighteen-month term. I am very happy with that eighteen months being considered a full four-year term in my position and being eligible only for one further term. I am probably the only councillor in that is in that position, and I want to make it clear that I am not asking for that to change for me specifically. So those are my comments.
Anyone else?
Well, I would just like to chime in that now that I've been on the council for a full year and with a background in city planning, I think, I mean, I have a whole new level of respect of what it takes to be on the council, to be a councillor and to be the mayor. And I I would like to, you know, separate the term limits for those two positions. I just, I really think it takes time to build up your knowledge on what the issues are, who the staff is, who the other city councillors are, who the other agencies in our regions are, and those staff people. I mean, there are so many layers of information to learn besides the issues that we study and address and make decisions. And I agree with councillor Linfield that the mayor's position is really key for our city, that they they're the symbol of Wilsonville. Whether it's at the city council meetings, if it's on TV, if she's out there, you know, talking to the state legislature, it's just such an important role that I think it takes time for that person to learn all the issues that are really important to Wilsonville. So I I support rewriting it for separation. And and I still don't quite understand the definition of the year, but it sounds like that's something we need to address. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, you know, we've heard, we've we've discussed, I think everyone probably wants to have an experienced person in the role, a tested person in the role. And it sounds like Tuolton has already done a lot of the legwork here. I mean, you said, you said that their their term limits was very similar. I mean, it's like verbatim, is it, is it not?
Yes.
Okay.
The ballot, the actual charter language is verbatim.
It's a verbatim. Okay. So we have like the carbon copy of Tuolton and Tuolton, correct, has has made a a change that that aligns with what we're discussing here that that you've described, right? So I mean, that that if if we're using their 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 verbiage, it makes sense to me. I did wonder if you had information on the the clarification or defining those partial terms that Tigard is looking at? I think I saw in the packet that they're looking at three years. Is that because if a person ran, like, his council, you you usually like have, we have five members, some people have seven, whatever, you know, but an odd number, and then half of the people plus one run, plus the mayor, actually, I guess, it's half of the council, plus the mayor runs in the same year, and then two years later, the other half of council runs, correct? So you have this staggered approach where there's always like, half your council is at a two-year into their term, or if it's their second term, they're at six years into their term, terms. They're in their middle of their second term when the mayor's seat comes up. Right? So was Tigard's laid out so that if somebody that had been serving on council wanted to run for mayor, that they wouldn't be like disadvantaged or again, not able to have as much experience as somebody that just happened to be elected at a different cycle point? Is that?
Yeah.
Is that why they have it like that?
Yeah, that's the generally the information that I've gotten from Tigard is exactly what you're talking about, is those sort of off-cycle councillors not being at a disadvantage of being able to serve the same number of terms as as a mayor, you know, because of them being the off-cycle, right? And so
Which is just happenstance. I don't know. I don't know very many people that would strategize so far in advance that, you know, that you you either end up on on-cycle or off-cycle, you know, when you run, so.
And maybe, maybe on that note, I will just jump ahead to the second discussion item. Because I do think it's relevant is because the nuance between Tuolton and Tigard on this issue is interesting and, well, interesting for somebody like me probably, but but confusing for most people, maybe. So Tuolton, which Wilsonville is modeled after, talks about service in the term of years. Where Tiger talks about it in service as a number of terms you serve. So that's why it's defining what a term is by, you know, it uses, okay, three years or more, but it says you can serve two terms as councillor and two terms as mayor, whereas what Tuolton and Wilsonville says is you can serve twelve years as mayor or councillor, and then their change was you can serve eight years as councillor and eight years as mayor. So there's this difference in terminology of years versus terms. So right now, we follow Tuolton on turn, on years. And how that year is calculated is by every three hundred and sixty-five point two-five days. So it says, okay, so both charters say, all right, you're going to add up all the days that a person has served since they were, you know, sworn in. You're going to count up all the days they served, and every three hundred and sixty-five point two-five days counts as one year, counts as a year. But there's no sentence after that explains, okay, well, what happens with all the numbers in between three hundred and sixty-five point two-five and its multiples, right? So it doesn't explain, okay, if you were appointed and you only served a hundred and a hundred days before you were sworn in after an election, does that count as a year or does it not? If you serve four hundred days, so over a year, but less than two years, does that count as one year or does that count as two years? The charter language for both cities is silent on that issue. But what happened with Tuolton, which again, Wilsonville was modeled after, is in the explanatory statement for Tuolton, which is almost verbatim in Wilsonville, it's, it suggests that any number of days where you are, where a member of the council is filling a vacancy, so they're being appointed, or as councillor Linville noted, there can be an an off-cycle election, that any number of days serving in that, in that vacant, filling in a vacancy counts essentially as you've now served a year and thus you will not be eligible for serving a third term, the third twelve years or that that third four-year cycle. So the explanatory statement in my, you know, in my review, doesn't necessarily match with what the charter says, because the charter seems to be somewhat silent on this issue in the, in what I'm reviewing. But the problem is, is that's what the explanatory statement says. So there's, in, to me, there's confusion about did, do Wilsonville or did Wilsonville voters know what they were voting for with regard to how the years are calculated in these circumstances? And so if it's the council's desire, it may make sense to put forward also a ballot measure that clarifies what this years of service means in these, I mean, the vast majority of people, unless you're doing, unless you're the on-cycle councillor who then, you know, does the twelve years or an on-cycle councillor who then does four years as mayor, very few people are going to meet the three hundred and sixty-five point two-five days perfectly. And so it kind of does make sense to me to clarify that, to get clarification from the voters, because it it's just not clear, in in my opinion. And so kind of, they 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 flow together, but they are somewhat separate issues. You know, adjusting term limits with regard to the mayor, the mayor position, and also explaining, clarifying what years should be.
I see. And and so then if we're trying to bring clarity to things, would your advice be then that this would be a separate ballot item that they that would be voted on separately, just to try to keep it all as clear as possible, so we're not asking any sort of joint question or anything like that?
Right, exactly. There's, again, there's some, there's some nuance about how cities can do these referrals of ballot measures, but the cleanest approach, which I would recommend, is doing them as separate ballot measures. And I did put together some, just some options to sort of help kind of think through what you could do, not that any, not that council even needs to do anything, but is, you know, you could, you could just talk about clarifying just the one-year issue, if it's less than a year. That could be what the ballot measure would do. You could do these circumstances like I'm talking about of what's a hundred days, what's four hundred days of you clarify by saying you round up or you round down, just like kind of normal math, right? So if it's under fifty percent, you round down. If it's over fifty percent, you round up. Or you could make it static where it's like you only ever round up or you only ever round down. Like, so those are some options. It's kind of hard with what Tiger did, because Tiger defines, uses terms instead of years. It'd be kind of hard to model it after Tigard without sort of doing a whole rewrite of the section. So I'm, I mean, if council, if that's where council's going, it's it's more of repealing and replacing that entire section in my mind versus honing in on this years issue and how do you count the years?
I have a question, maybe just sticking with the years portion on the clarification, and I agree, when when you go back and read the explanatory statement in the May twenty twenty voters pamphlet, it is not clear. I I think you you could read it one way and you could probably read it another way. And I'm not a lawyer, but it could come back to just being confusing and why do we want to be confusing on purpose? So, but but about the number of years and and the so for example, because our charter does, I believe, compel us to have an election every two years. So let's say a city councillor was elected and often what happens is is some family situation or a career situation sometime happens and you know, they they leave after let's say, let's say they left after one and a half years out of a four-year term. And so the council would appoint somebody to fill, really, I believe, the last, they would appoint somebody and then I believe an election, is it correct that an election would need to be held at that two-year mark?
That's, you're exactly right.
Okay, so it's not like that person who replaces is going to stay for two and a half years. So it would just be filling in up until the next election.
Right. And then, and then whoever won that election would serve out the remainder of that term. So they wouldn't, yeah, they wouldn't serve four years from that election. They would just, it would be for that two-year, the remaining two years of that term. They could run again, but.
And I think it's important to think about what the voters want, not not like, you know, if you go, so anyway, that let's say this, so somebody's appointed to fill about six months. And and then there's an election and somebody's elected and they have two years. It's to be consistent, I just wanted to ask you, what would be the way to to keep that person who just got elected to two years to have the same opportunity for the number of terms or the voters to elect that person for the same number? Just so it's not a one-off, like, well, that one doesn't get as many terms.
So if you want to, if if basically what you're trying, what I think you're getting at, so clarify if I'm incorrect, but basically if somebody's filling a vacancy, even if that, even if that filling of the vacancy means they have to do this sort of off-cycle election, let's say they, you know, the three-year circumstance you talked about, and then, you know, after a year, they need to go through an election, they serve out the remaining two years. So what council could do is say, any filling of vacancies doesn't count towards the, doesn't count towards your years. That could be a ballot measure that you all put to the voters to have them decide.
Is the maximum amount of time you could serve filling a vacancy, is that two years? I mean, this is if somebody left after one week or something.
Yes, right. So basically, if somebody, if somebody left, you know, less than two years into their term, you could appoint them and then they would need to go at that next election. They would, if they wanted to stay in the position, they'd need to run for it and get elected, but then they'd only be feeling, filling the remaining time. So I guess my question to you, back to you, would be if somebody is going through that scenario.
Oh, even in that second two years?
Yeah, if somebody's going through that scenario, would, is, I mean, this is the question that, it's trying to figure out the question that you want to put to the voters is is the question then, do the voters want that person to only be eligible for two more full terms, meaning that they'd serve less than twelve years? They've served fewer than, fewer than twelve years? Or the question could be more about like these kind of figuring out how you calculate a specific year? And then you're not getting into the nuances of, oh, were they appointed and didn't have to go through an election, you know, off-cycle election or not? You know, that can get complicated if that's a question you're trying to ask.
I think the language in the voters pamphlet statement might have been trying to say that that person who served that one-off two years to finish out a term that that it didn't, one way of reading it is they didn't want to limit them, to cut them off from, get, give them less than twelve years.
Right. Yeah, I'm, like you said, Mayor, I agree with you that you know, different lawyers could argue, argue the charter language different differently. It's open to interpretation, definitely.
Especially the voter pamphlet language, the explanatory statement.
Yeah. Yep. It's, it's it's definitely confusing, and I do think that there is some, there is some discrepancy that could definitely be argued. it's definitely confusing and I do think that there is some, just, there is some discrepancy that could definitely be argued between what the explanatory statement says, the, the charter language says, and what the charter language actually says, or doesn't say, in my opinion. I think it's relatively silent on this issue. Um, and yet the explanatory statements are making it sound very clear, like you wouldn't be able to, you know, the person wouldn't be able to run.
Well, I, I wanted to add, those were just a couple of technical questions that I had, that I recognize the value of term limits. I'm also not in any way, um, against term limits. I think, um, they really bring a lot of value to the community. Um, I think that our, what we're talking about here is that we see some confusion in the term limits and we see that as Tuolumne did, the way that it will play out over the future decades, you would often see one-term mayors and you just, you just wouldn't be able to get around that. I also don't think, um, so, so, so assuming that um, we have term limits and that it stays relatively insistent with this, you know, honoring the, uh, the twenty-year format. I mean, I see that the Tuolumne, I see value in the Tuolumne. And what we're trying to do here is give our city attorney direction from the council. And we've heard of several different things here today, so I guess we have to keep eliminating options or narrowing, trying to narrow things down so that we can give our city attorney direction to go back and write a clear, um, statement. So if we start, maybe the easiest question is the second one. If we started with that, does that make sense to start with that one, Amanda, or not?
Sure, sure, yeah. Yeah, we can start there. I mean, I will say, I, I've heard from a couple of you, it sounds like that Tuolumne's, um, language just given, kind of given where our starting point was with Tuolumne, that, that Tuolumne's revision makes sense, but, um, I think I, Counselor Barry, um, I'm not sure if, I, I understand that you're supportive of separating the terms. I don't know if you have that same feeling about the Tuolumne language. And I know, Counselor Linville, you did talk about two four-year terms for counselors and two four-year terms as mayor. So, that's somewhat in line with what Tuolumne did, but I don't know.
Could you recount what Tuolumne did again for us, please, Amanda?
Sure. So, Tuolumne, and just for like, um, members of the public who may be watching at home, this is an exhibit in the, um, council packet. It's attached, it's page twenty-one of the council packet, it's attachment to, to the staff report. So, basically, I, I'll just read it, so, for ease. It says, this is the measure language, um, the original charter, prior to the amendment, said, no person shall be eligible to serve on the council more than twelve years in a twenty-year period, whether serving as councillor, mayor, a pro temp member, or a combination thereof. What the amendment is, is to add, except if a person has served only two terms as city councillor, then that person shall be eligible to serve another two consecutive terms as mayor. So basically, it increases from eight years, or from twelve years to sixteen years. And their explanatory statement is also included, um, or, well, their ballot title, question summary and explanatory statement are also included in the palette packet, that's pages twenty-four and twenty-five. And then the explanatory statement, it, it again goes into that it's eight years and eight years. So, potential increase from twelve to sixteen years if somebody does two terms as councillor and two terms as mayor. Mayor, I think you're muted. I think, oh, there you go. What, could you repeat yourself, Mayor? I think you're muted.
Okay, oh, sorry. Um, I think what you just described there might relate better to, to discussion one.
Yes.
So could we?
They did not, Tuolumne did not make any change with regard to this three hundred and sixty-five day issue. The three hundred and sixty-five point two five days.
Okay, so in, in the case of Tuolumne, if, let me see if I have this right, if someone has served four hundred days, does that count as, as a term?
So, oh, sorry to interrupt.
So, if, if you were to take the language plus the explanatory statement, they would not be able to run that, that four hundred days would count as a term.
Okay.
As, yes.
What about if we simplified it, forget the days, and, uh, just add another sentence saying, if somebody's been appointed, then that does not count as part of this two-term limit. Like, that's the exception.
Mm-hmm. That, I, yes, so that is something that the council could put forward as a ballot measure.
And in that case, then on the, um, for example, if somebody just served six months, it doesn't count. If they were then elected for the remainder of that term and served an additional two years, would that still not count as a term? In that, in that description, in that?
Yeah, I think what we would do, if, if, I'm getting the sense of kind of where you're going, is we wouldn't necessarily refer to it as appointment. We would say something like, the filling of any vacancy or any partial term does not count towards the calculation of the years.
That, that's simpler.
Yeah. Because, I mean, there could be a scenario where, let's say, somebody resigns after a year. A person gets appointed, they fill that for a year, there's an election, and somebody else gets elected. I mean, that could happen. And so, the question would be, do either of those people, either the person who served the vacancies, filling the vacancy for the year, or the person who got elected, are they both then limited by a full term? You know, so I think what I would say is just if, if that's where the council, if that's the, uh, issue the council wanted to put forth to the community, I would say, don't talk about it in the terms of appointment, just put it in terms of filling, filling a vacant, um, or a partial term or something like that, a vacancy.
That, that makes sense to me.
And so in that case, if we, I'm, I'm thinking that going with the two years as councillor, or two terms as, as a councillor, and two terms as mayor, where we had that language, I think, from Tuolumne. That would be the maximum. Could we go back to the Tuolumne, or the discussion one, please? There it is. I guess I'm going back to what Counselor Linville said at the beginning.
Well, it seems to me that what Tuolumne did is they retained the twelve years, the three full terms
Mm-hmm.
for each of those positions. But what they said is that in terms of someone who has functioned as a councillor for two terms, they would still be eligible for two additional terms as a mayor.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think they put a little bit of apples and oranges together. If, if I'm, if I'm hearing that correctly, is that correct?
Yes, you're correct. So, in another scenario, let's say, um, councillor only serves, they serve one term as councillor, they run for mayor and they get elected as mayor. They would then, they'd still only be able to serve two terms as mayor, they'd still be subject to that twelve-year limit. You know, so yes, it is, it is the little bit of mixing of the two, it's not fully separated. They're not fully distinguished from each other.
And that is why I, I, I'm not in support of Tuolumne's because it still ties the councillor, the terms spent as a councillor in the mayoral term limits. And I, and I am not supportive of that. I am, but I am supportive of cutting the length of, of the terms of both of those positions if they're distinct. And what, what that would allow, right now, what we have is a maximum for a, any combination thereof of twelve years in a twenty-year period. So whether it's heavy on the end of the councillor and light on the end of the mayor, or heavy on the end of the mayor and light on the end of a councillor, it still is twelve years within any twenty-year period, any combination. And, uh, what I'm saying is considering the possibility of two four-year terms for either one of those, but they are distinct. So instead of a combination of being twelve years out of twenty, the maximum that it could be would be sixteen years out of twenty, and that would be possibility of two terms as a councillor and two terms as a mayor.
So, Counselor Linville, so I'm clear, if a councillor had no desire to run for mayor, they would only be able to be a councillor for eight years?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm thinking about the having four, obviously, we know that we have four councillor positions. And that is, um, that is just a lot of positions to fill for two terms. Can be done. I think, um, that might be why Tuolumne did it the way that they did. It does give you a little more continuity on the councillor position. Everybody is, as we noticed, it takes a lot of time to be mayor. It's a big commitment. And all of those people who decide to commit to be councillor, you know, a certain portion of them are willing to, to commit to be mayor, mayor.
Well, um, in, in practical terms, what they did, what they're saying is you can be two terms as a councillor and still be eligible for two terms as a mayor, which is the sixteen years out of the twenty, which is the same as what I was saying.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now, if we want to keep the council terms as three terms and let the mayor still just be two terms, um, I, I, I don't know, you know, unless there is a combination, and then it would be, it would be sixteen. Otherwise, it would be twelve. Um, but then when you add in these partial terms, um, then it gets very complicated. And, you know, I, I think we've, we've already got language that is very clear that says three hundred and sixty-five point two five days equals one year.
Mm-hmm.
How we got away from that in any kind of an explanatory statement or in our perception, that was what the voters voted on, that is what is clearly in the charter. We already have that definition, so that anything that is less than three hundred and sixty-five point two five days doesn't, it, by definition, does not constitute a year. Um, I, I don't know where we, where, you know, where that came up, where that came forward from, but, um, that, that's what's in the charter, that's what was on the ballot measure.
So are you trying, are, as you're talking about that, are you saying that when somebody's been appointed, that that should be an exception? Or are you saying that if they serve more than three hundred and sixty-five point two, uh, then that counts as a year for the, part of the total two terms of four and four, eight? You're on mute.
Counselor Linville, I think you're on mute.
Uh, Counselor Barry, are you asking me that question?
Well, I just, yeah, I am, because you're bringing up the three hundred and sixty-five point two five. So are you saying that should be applied to the appointed time that somebody may serve? And then therefore, if it's over three hundred and sixty-five point two five, then that needs to be counted as part of their four-year and four-year total?
No, what I, what I said in the very, no, I'm just saying, that's what we already have. Um, when, in my statements that I made in the very beginning, I think that we need to remove the partial terms from definition of years of service. Because I think we already have provisions in the charter for limiting those partial terms.
And so if somebody, let me try it another way. I think what seems to be unclear is if somebody served six months right now, it might be argued that that counts as a year. And if your limit would be twelve years, you know, that could get into a a three or six months could count as a whole year to that maximum twelve years or whatever it is. Um, it's just not clear. So, what I'm hearing Counselor Linville say is if we um, understand that in our charter, it already clarified, it already states that three hundred and sixty-five point two five um, a service up until that amount, when you hit that number of days, it constitutes a year. If you are serving in some appointed partial year and it does not reach three hundred and sixty-five point two five, it does not count as a year. The problem seems to be that it's not consistently stated that way. So if perhaps in our proposed, um, improvement language, it could, it could take out the ambiguity. And it could, it could simply clarify that any service less than three hundred and sixty-five point two five days does not count as a year.
And I would support that in lieu of, of removal of the partial terms. Because I think that's language that we already have. Um, I think in the explanatory statement, it was, uh, discussed in the Voters Pamphlet, there, that, that one, one, one councillor and one mayor would, would be affected by those partial, you know, by the, of the previous terms. And, um, um, if I go back to the, if I go back to the statement, um, it, it says, um, the measure is retroactive as to counting time of service of all current city councillors. If the measure passes, the current mayor could finish his current term, but would not be eligible to run or be re-elected in November, the longest-tenured city councillor- The longest tenured city council member whose term expires um, nah, would not be eligible for reelection. And if reelected in November, the current city council president would thereafter be eligible for one more term in any capacity. The remaining two city councillors would each be eligible to run for two more terms in any capacity from the date their current terms expire. So, um, I, I don't.
Yeah, would, would it be helpful if I could take this down and screen share um the explanatory statement that councillor Wilson's reading from?
Yeah.
Let me do that. So this, once it comes, this is the explanatory statement from Wilsonville. Like I said, I have the Tuolotin one. Um, also, if we want to look at that as well, so um so it starts, um, well, the first big paragraph says, if the measure is passed, it would prohibit any person from serving as a mayor, city councillor, a combination of both for more than twelve years in any twenty year period. The twelve year period applies to the total amount of time a person serves on the Wilsonville City Council, regardless of the position held. Under the measure during any twenty year period, the city councillor could run for mayor if doing so would not exceed the twelve year limit, including time already served a city councillor. Okay, so then it goes on and um I think it's
It's the next paragraph, it talks about appointed.
Yes, so this, this is where it gets confusing and I think it's because they use the word because. It says, the measure would also apply a per- to a person appointed to complete a term in office. So they're not distinguishing what, how, the length of that appointment term. They're just saying. And it says, for example, a person appointed to serve any portion, any portion of a four year term caused by a vacancy would be eligible to serve two additional four year terms in any city council office, mayor or city councillor, because running a, for a third term would exceed the twelve year limit. In such instance, the effect of the measure would result in a term limit of less than twelve years. This would be the case for one current city councillor. So that's, that's where I'm getting at, like this explanatory statement to me. The, I, I think the charter's somewhat silent on, you know, this calculation of the three hundred and sixty-five point two five days. If that is if it doesn't cur- perfectly match with year, with the time that somebody is serving, it doesn't explain what you do with those, you know, few extra days or, you know, six extra months or what have you. Eh, but this explanatory statement seems to indicate if you're appointed for any period of time, if a person's appointed for any period of time to fill a vacancy, they would not be able to run for a third term.
Right.
No, doesn't it say they are eligible to serve two more four year terms?
Right, so if, but what I'm saying is like, let's say they get appointed for six months before that that particular position is up for reelect, for up for election.
Right.
They'd only be able to essentially run twice. They would not be able to run three times.
Got it, yeah.
Whereas, whereas if somebody only ran when it was up for election, they'd be able to run three times. So.
So to to clarif- to remove the confusion basically here, which I think is important so that we don't have our city having the same conversation for the next fifty years. Um, I'm asking the city attorney here, does defining the three hundred, the, the, the definition of a year very clearly as three hundred, is anything less than three hundred and sixty-five point two five days does not count as a year? Does that help?
That would definitely help, yes.
So it sounds like we might have agreement on that point. Anybody not agree with that? I mean, or see a better way to go or issue with that? Okay. Then if we, go ahead.
And I just, so for clarification, if somebody served, you know, if, if a person, if a councillor, you know, a year and a half in um, resigned and that um position, that vacancy was filled. You know, based on this discussion, what, what I would say based on this clarification is that, that, you know, two and a half years that somebody serves to fill that vacancy if they, you know, were elected and all that. That would count as a term. So they would then only be eligible to run twice after two and a half years. Okay. Just make sure we're all on the same page.
And, you know, I think somebody, it's just clear then if it would be clear that if somebody wants to serve out a two year unex- unex- um, you know, two, two remaining years of a four year term, someone left and there's this two years sitting there that needs to be filled, um, they would know ahead of time that that would count. Right?
Yes, exactly. And that's information, because you know, the, the city runs those, in those cases, the city runs those appointments, you know, putting out a call for candidates and stuff, so that's information that we'd be able to provide with this clarity. So I'm generally seeing head nods of if I bring language back at our next council meeting on for, at least for one ballot measure that says, you know, anything less than three hundred and sixty-five days, three hundred and sixty-five point two five days doesn't count as a year of service. General consensus that that's something you all would like to look at? To discuss, okay, I'm seeing head nods, so. Mayor, do you want to discuss? Um, what I'm hearing from councillor Linville is a desire to do eight and eight and just be kind of clear cut about eight and eight between city council and mayoral terms?
Well, I think we should go, yes, go to that discussion because we've heard a couple of different things. Um, is I under- um, the eight, the eight and eight, um, let's think of the plus and minus of that. The, this person who filled two, you know, two, two remaining years um would really be able to only serve one additional term, I believe.
I still like the language of if they're appointed, they're excluded from uh, considering that as a full term.
Well, even if they were elected, you could still be elected to fill, so somebody left. Somebody's appointed for six months, maybe they don't even run again or they don't win. And there could be person B who's elected to fill the remaining two years of that term, okay? So they were elected, not appointed. Um, that, that person, that would, those two years would count as four years, I believe.
Right.
That's what we're saying, just want to make sure we understand that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, you know, forward, thinking that you know, assuming we have really good people, are we shooting Wilsonville in the foot by not letting them continue?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I think we should consider here. And, and, and if we combine that with saying only eight years as city council and eight years as mayor, that particular person was really only doing six six years as city councillor would be the most they could do.
And to me, that doesn't seem right.
That's a lot of turnover there. And that's why I wonder if, how Tuolotin, the, the value of the Tuolotin proposition, their current new correction to this same term limits.
Well, the only, the only concern there that I have about that is because we have off cycle
Yeah.
of, of ma- mayor and councillor elections. Let's say we have a councillor who was elected in twenty twenty-three. And they have aspirations to serve as a mayor at some point. But the mayor election is coming up in twenty twenty-four and then not again until twenty twenty-eight. And so that person who was elected in twenty twenty-three, if they wanted to be considered in the mayor, could only serve two years out of that four year term. And they would have to then resign and wait till the mayor election happened in twenty twenty-eight.
I think that's real clumsy.
I do too.
That's introducing the same level of uncertainty and um chaos. So to get around that, to, to address that, then um, it seems like we need to consider this partial term that councillor Barry was bringing up. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I, I will note too, I, because um I think it's worth noting in the Tuolotin language, what's interesting about the Tuolotin language when it talks about service as a city councillor, it does not talk about it being consecutively run with the mayor's terms. It says, a city, if a person has served only two terms as a city councillor, they're also eligible to serve another two consecutive terms as mayor. So if it were me, if, if I was then asked to interpret that, what I would say is if you're an off-cycle councillor, you can serve your eight years, you'd have to take two years off until the mayoral election, because you're off-cycle from the mayoral election. You'd have two years off, but then you could run for mayor because you've only served the eight terms. But you, so you wouldn't have to resign, but you wouldn't be able to serve it on the council in that two-year gap between when your term ends and when the mayor, mayor position is up for election. The only time it talks about consecutive terms is when it talks about those two mayoral terms.
Well, I, I'm just thinking about, let's say our current, let's say our current situation. Because we have a mayoral election that is going to be in November of twenty twenty-four. And that position, whoever is elected to that position, if there were not any other terms involved, would be able to serve until twenty twenty-eight, right? Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five to six, twenty-six to seven, twenty-eight, yeah. But our current city councillors who have just finished their first term will finish their second term at, on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. They will have done two terms and would, under this tiger, under the Tuolotin model, would be eligible for two more terms as a mayor. But they would have to stop out in twenty twenty-four and could not then be elected until twenty twenty-eight. So it doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, if eh all the terms ran consecutively, it would make sense, but with our staggered terms, it doesn't seem to make much sense to have that. Because you'd never have a councillor that has two terms unless they just did two terms and then quit. Mayor, you're, you're, you're muted.
I, I don't know if Tuolotin has the, the staggered terms that we do.
They do.
Okay, so that's another, so going back to the, I want to circle back to the the uh two four year terms as mayor, and just look at this again, um which would be sixteen within a twenty year period if somebody were to do that. And that, the way that you are describing that councillor Linville, if somebody doesn't want to run for mayor, then the most they could do is eight years as city councillor. Could we hear from people about any pluses and minuses they see to that?
So let me just clarify, so that would be two terms, four years each, total eight years. And that's the maximum and how long of a period? Twelve or twenty? Twelve years? Twenty period, so. I mean, you know, I, I look at the city council and I think you guys, like, I'm so proud. I think I have so much respect for all these people. And so I'm looking like, of course, we want to have continuation. But then, on the flip side of the coin, you could get, you know, somebody that really doesn't serve the the city. And so when you have the term limits, then that's the option to kind of clean house.
Well, and the voters said, you know, the voters want term limits. So we're starting from the premise of having term limits and we started with the premise of twenty years and I'm, I'm looking at that, that's what I'm starting with. So we're, we've all um and, and they're, whether they're doing a great job or not, it's still, the concept is getting new blood in every few years.
That, that's the concept, but it's also making sure that we have councillors and mayors that have knowledge and experience and understand the issues and have the relationships with everybody that they need to.
Right, and we don't, we don't, um, we're not the only city in the whole region that very frequently would have one-term mayors, which is what we have. What, what it looks like we're going to have with this, which is why Tuolotin addressed it.
I will note, just as kind of a time check, mayor, that we have another item um on this work session for ten minutes. So I have a suggestion because I think this is too important to rush a decision on. And I know that we don't have a planned regular council meeting, uh, you know, our regularly planned council meeting the first week of February. So my suggestion would be that we consider doing just a work session on this item, maybe um maybe the week after we, after um that first week of February. You know, essentially find a date that works for everybody to have a work session just on this item. And in that time, what staff can do, I, I've already reached out to Bill Evans about um, potentially maybe putting something out on Let's Talk Wilsonville to get some um community feedback. We could sort of flush out these different concepts that you all are talking about.
I like a lot about a lot of them, but there's a, there's a hybrid I think we're moving toward.
Yeah, and so that way we could get some feedback that, I mean, it's not, you know, a scientific poll, but at least you'd get some pulse of the community in that time. So I'd maybe suggest that, given this discussion, you all can take some time to think about what's being discussed. If you have any questions in the meantime, you could reach out to me, but that would be my, my recommendation, just given the, the other item I know you have on your agenda.
But I think the theme that we're looking for is, that I'm hearing, that I'm committed to is yes, we want term limits, we have, we have term limits now. They had, there's some real confusion um in, in the material that accompanies all of this, the voter pamphlet material and the charter. We've seen some improvements by some neighboring cities, but I don't think we're exactly ready to see which is best for Wilsonville. That's what I'm hearing.
And, and I would And and I would, I would guess that uh Tuolotin probably did their homework and figured all this out in terms of the two terms eligible to serve two terms as mayor. And they probably have thought through how that looks with staggered terms.
Mm hmm.
So maybe we could get some more information kind of about how that might work.
None of this is going to be perfect. If you didn't have any term limits at all, the staggered terms would never present themselves as an issue. And so there's going to be a little bit of a hiccup when you have a term limit. So we have to live with some of that.
Yeah. Yeah, we can definitely do some more.
I I want to say that I'm inclined toward some the the Tuolotin model um in large part. Um.
Okay, it also it also sounds like we have consensus on separating the mayor and the councillor terms.
Okay, we will, staff will reach out about um a time that works for councillors on and the mayor on um a special work session on this item. So thank you. I've taken a lot of notes and um, yeah, we will, we'll be back with more.
Thank you. And so that brings us to our next um item, which is our leg. Session.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, uh, members of the city council, uh, Mark Ottnett, Public and Government Affairs Director with the city. And with me tonight is Greg Leo, our public affairs consultant. I have a a a PowerPoint to share, so I will start that now. This uh work session item pertains to a proposed twenty twenty four state legislative session set of priorities.
The uh state legislative session priorities are based on our city council uh uh agendas, and we have the uh priorities that emerge. They complement the general policy references of the twenty twenty three, twenty four state legislative agenda.
The uh legislative session priorities are topical, timely issues of specific relevance to the city and our transit agency, SMART. These are major issues for which the city council has not expressed a prior policy preference and are not included uh in this uh proposal, such as we have not addressed measure one ten drawn legalization reform, measure one fourteen changes to firearms, uh, or the Oregon property tax scheme. And as Greg noted, uh, this complements our twenty-three, twenty-four state legislative agenda. The seven, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark.
No, the the seven priorities are restore recreational immunity for public use of trails, fund the West commuter rail extension study, create a state residential housing infrastructure fund, and oppose efforts to override land use laws for urban growth boundary expansion. Reauthorize and fund the Business Oregon Regionally Significant Industrial Sites Program. Provide Charbonneau and Wilsonville with an I five Boone Bridge tolling waiver exemption. Extend the sunset on the vertical housing development zone incentive program. And finally, improve childcare resources to benefit families, workforce and employers.
Let's start to talk about recreational immunity. This comes from a court case out of Newport, uh, which uh would take away the recreational immunity that cities would have at this point. Public and private landowners on improved trails would no longer be protected from liability lawsuits. The city county insurance services have recommended that the city and the counties close the trails to the public. Uh, at this time, the city has declined to close trails, uh, parks and trails to the public.
The League of Oregon Cities and others are ready to bring a bill in the twenty-fourth session to restore recreational immunity. However, we anticipate opposition from some parties such as trial lawyers.
Another important priority is the fund the West commuter rail extension study. Uh, we have a proposed bill that would establish an interjurisdictional task force that would study connecting the Portland metro region to the Salem Kaiser Metro region with high-capacity transit, our west uh commuter rail. And uh, we had a similar bill, in fact, almost identical bill, uh, last session HB two-two-six-two, six-six-two A, which uh passed unanimously from the Joint Transportation Committee in the last session.
However, due to a legislative uh boycott situation, over four hundred bills were not considered, including this one. This bill is supported by a number of cities along the route, also by the transit agencies that serve those cities, and importantly, important Western Railroad, which operates west on behalf of TriMet.
So the West commuter rail study um has received a lot of support. At this point, we have twenty-seven state legislators as sponsors of uh LC one-three-five. Uh, we really appreciate Senator Woods uh being the chief sponsor, but we also have other chief sponsors, uh, Representative Neron is the chief sponsor. And you can see that uh we have quite a few members, both of the House and the Senate. So it's bipartisan and bicaramel in terms of the support uh for our West to Salem bill.
The third item is to create a state residential housing infrastructure fund and oppose efforts to override land use laws for UGB expansion. The governor's housing production advisory council has uh no representatives from any cities. Um, it's mainly um low-income housing operators and real estate development interests and who are proposing sometimes rather simply simplistic solutions to housing, including just adding land to the UGB that does nothing to actually produce any housing.
One thing that the cities have been saying throughout this discussion and negotiation is that we should create a state residential housing infrastructure fund, uh, which uh appears to be in LC nineteen, which is the bill. Oppose efforts to override the land use laws for the UGB expansion. The governor's office has recognized our comments and that the greatest impediment to advancing more housing is the overall high cost of infrastructure. So there will be some money associated with this bill to pay those costs. Developers build market rate housing that provides a greater profit, avoiding lower-margin affordable housing. This bill will help us build more affordable and middle housing.
If we can correct it a bit, uh, new state resources, as Greg noted, include potential outright grants and low-interest loans to the city to advance planning and infrastructure for the development of new housing. There's also proposals to subsidize housing for those making sixty percent or less of the area meeting income and to focus efforts on building homes for people with moderate and low incomes.
Another important priority is to reauthorize and fund Business Oregon Regionally Significant Industrial Site Program, or the RSIS program. This offers various financing mechanisms to advance industrial sites to a shovel-ready status. Due diligence grants to create better understanding of constraints of the regionally significant sites. Uh, so direct the site preparation assistance uh by authorizing forgivable loans or low or no interest loans and or other tax sharing arrangements.
And we should note that the program allows the state to loan uh provide loans to local governments to be forgiven up to fifty percent of site preparation costs. A tax sharing arrangement where fifty percent of the annual corporate and personal income tax revenues from the site can reimburse the public investment for up to total site preparation cost.
Another important uh priority is to reauthorize. Oh, my gosh, we reauthorize and fund the Business Oregon Regionally Significant Industrial Site Program. City of Wilsonville is one of the twelve local governments uh with industrial sites that Business Oregon has designated as pre-qualified. The twenty twenty-three legislative effort to extend the fund and fund the RSI pro RSIS program failed due to semiconductor package uh kind of fatigue. Uh, League of Oregon Cities and others seek a forty million dollar allocation and uh to extend the program through twenty twenty four.
We also are advocating to provide Charbonneau and Wilsonville with an I five Boone Bridge tolling waiver and exemption. Essentially, ODOT policy in the nineteen sixties and seventies allowed a city to use the interstate highway for local access. The Charbonneau District of Wilsonville has been dependent upon the use of I five Boone Bridge since nineteen seventy-one.
Older senior residents of Charbonneau have only one route over the I five Boone Bridge to access the remainder of Wilsonville for shopping, medical appointments, and all those many things they do. Uh, Wilsonville residents, workers and businesses north of the I five Lamb River Bridge who visit or serve Charbonneau are in are in the same situation.
ODOT's current policies do not address the situation of a community's dependence upon the interstate highway bridge to provide local access when there's no other route. Therefore, we will advocate for the legislature to write a waiver or exemption from tolling with crossing the I five Boone Bridge for Wilsonville residents and businesses.
Another one of our priorities is is to extend the sunset on the vertical housing development zone, the VHDZ incentive. It allows cities to provide a ten-year tax abatement on a portion up to eighty percent of the improvement value qualifying the mixed-use residential or commercial development. The vertical housing program is scheduled to sunset on January first, twenty twenty six. Projects under construction by that date will be ineligible for the incentive.
Uh, projects not under construction.
Thank you. Not under construction by that date.
The city council, the city council has approved two vertical housing development zones that will take long time to advance, the Vilbois Village and the Town Center area. And the developers have indicated that a mixed-use development uh zone is uh required to make these projects financially feasible.
So the Wilsonville Town Center, Vertical Housing Development Zone, the first mixed-use commercial then actual project, uh, is exciting project with five-story, one-hundred-and-fourteen unit multifamily residential complex with four thousand two hundred square feet of retail space on the ground floor and residences.
And finally, number seven, to improve childcare resources. Uh, our Wilsonville employers have identified the lack of childcare as an obstacle to workforce recruitment and retention. Our economic development manager has been greatly involved with the Clackamas County Childcare for All Coalition, as has Council President Akrevall, and this is part of the Clackamas Workforce Partnerships uh program.
Phase one of this program will be to stabilize and increase childcare workforce, align childcare educator salaries with the K twelve educators. Uh, phase two will be to make childcare more available, provide funding for new childcare providers. And phase three will make childcare more affordable by capping the family childcare uh contributions.
These are legislative concepts that have been suggested that will take some time to work out uh through a work group to become potential law. In summary, these are the seven proposed uh twenty twenty-four state legislative session priorities that are being proposed for city council consideration.
So the schedule of the short session, uh, or the twenty twenty-four session, we call it the short session, uh, is that February start, uh, February fifth it will start. Uh, we'll hear the revenue forecast on February seventh. It does look like there will be some additional resources once the state economist tells us that. On February twelfth is the posting deadline for the first chamber, so it has to be uh posted for a work session in the first chamber. Uh, nineteenth, uh, February nineteenth deadline for a work session in the first chamber. February twenty-third, it must be posted for a work session in the second chamber. And on February twenty-ninth deadline for the work session in the second chamber. It's all got to be done under Oregon Constitution by uh March tenth. So you can see this is a very busy thirty-five-day session.
This is the end of our formal presentation and uh we will stop sharing. Please advise if you uh have any suggestions or modifications that you might wish for us to consider.
So thank you for that presentation, um, Mr. Ottnett, Mr. Leo. We want to get you um mobile and ready to act on our direction. I see we have a comment from councillor Linville.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and the opportunity to review the legislative priorities. I certainly support all of them. Um, here here is my question, and that is, um, can you talk a little bit about the comprehensive approach to addressing Oregon's addiction and community livability crisis um that came forward from the League of Oregon Cities, the Oregon District Attorneys Association, the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, and the Oregon State Sheriff's Association? And will this be an issue that'll be addressed? Do you believe in the short session, or is this something that we need to think about? Um, supporting and discussing um later as we get into the longer session? I know that some of the actions in the action plan address measure one-ten, but it is more of a comprehensive approach to dealing with addiction and community livability. So uh, what are your thoughts about whether the city should consider the actions that are identified in those recommendations?
I'll let Mr. Leo take the lead.
Be happy to take that. Um, the the League of Oregon Cities has worked in coalition with the district attorneys, the sheriffs, the chiefs of police. It's a very comprehensive lift uh list of changes. There's a kind of a faction in legislature that would just plain repeal measure one-ten. And then uh, there's another group which really would take a more comprehensive look. And it's not just about um, you know, the very basic things like uh use of drugs in public places. It's kind, that's kind of subtle or more agreement on that. But it is a very comprehensive list of treatment and uh very systemic changes. So uh, you know, kudos, first of all, to the league for working to get kind of a broad coalition working on this. I think this will take time, uh, but there will probably be a few things that we'll see this short session. I do believe that uh to some degree, they will recriminalize the use of uh drugs in public places, and they will look for some ways to address the more obvious problems that lots of cities have seen in measure one-ten. I hope that answers. Uh, this could be a long-term, uh, you know, twenty twenty-five session uh thing to look at all of the many changes that have been proposed in that coalition proposal.
I'm just wondering if um this is something that um our council needs to look at and make a decision about whether we want to support the league's position um uh on this uh on these items. Um, uh, I think it goes beyond, as you said, repealing measure one-ten. I don't think it's it's that simple, but um how how would you recommend that the council then look at this this issue and and determine whether what we support or not?
Yeah, councillor Linville, uh, Mayor Fitzgerald, members of the council, I think we should uh watch that what the legislature's judiciary committees are going to do on this. They have had informational hearings on this. I think there will be a smaller package that will emerge when the bills uh first come out at the beginning of the session. We should monitor it carefully, bring back uh information, greater uh detail to the council. I don't think uh we're in a position to know exactly which issues are going to be coming up first out of that package. So this is something I think the council can look at over time.
And in in order to 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 operationalize that, I can um, would you can, I think I can envision us um deciding if we want to send a letter, for example, that would articulate our position in particular. You know, depending on what's being proposed, and so we could draft a letter and then come to an agreement on what it says. That's, I think that might be the kind of thing that we need to be prepared to do.
We could do that.
Okay, because we can't predict what we're for or against at this moment, but um, but we want our council involved. I did want, I know we're short on time, but I wanted to bring up the childcare um topic, which is very important to Wilsonville. We've done a survey, we've uh of our employers, we've got it as one of our council goals. We've got it as one of our council goals, recognizing we are not all state legislators ourselves. We are the city of Wilsonville, and there is only so much we can do for this big issue. Um, but I think maybe be that, but I'm really glad that we have that as an issue of growth. And so is that one also, Greg and Mark, that we could look to letters of support coming from our council? Were applicable?
Yes, uh, Mayor, uh, most certainly, and, uh, the legislative concept that the Clackamas Childcare for All has proposed has not, is not well flushed out. Our sense is that, uh, we would be fortunate if we could get a interim work group together after the 24th session that would actually propose real legislation for '25, because right now there is no actual legislative.
But this gives us that mo- motivation and, and, and grounding to do that.
Correct.
Does that sound reasonable, Council President Akrevall? I know that's something you've worked on a lot. Okay.
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
Okay, and then I wanted to just call out the West to Salem again. I, that is a visionary proposal. We have had so much interest up and down I-5 on this. It, it, um, there is a one pager that was developed that we've seen that really, um, identifies everything from college students getting to and from their, uh, wherever they're living, because often they cannot afford housing near the university, uh, workforce, travel. It, it's the most tangible way to get people off of the freeways that, that I've seen for a long time. And, um, but what's needed next is the actual full study to ascertain how that would be done. And, and I'm just really enthused, um, to see such support across the aisle and up and down I-5, basically, for that.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so I am going to bring up this legislative agenda at, during mayor's business and ask for council support for this. Um, I'm hearing that we still have many ways of participating and, um, adding more oomph to various elements of this as the session goes on. It's going to be very fast, intense session, so stay tuned. Council President Akrevall.
Um, which, along those lines, just to, um, reconfirm, so this is in um, coordination, or it's, it's augmenting or, um, enhancing our, our prior state legislative agenda that's the 2023, 2024. So that state legislative agenda has some kind of broad themes, um, in it, which are, they're still in play, right? Um, even though, even though this, this other, um, kind of appendix that we have now for the short session, short session is calling out some very distinct things, which I, I very, um, strong support and agree with and appreciate the work that's been put into, um, you know, documenting those. Um, I still, you know, I still believe in and, and really value what's, what's included in that 2023, 24, um, legislative event, agenda. And for instance, we have, um, one item, item number four is environmental impact. That's included in there, um, and that says, "Wilsonville supports protection of the environment and important natural resources um, for the benefit of human health, quality of life, um, recreational opportunities, wildlife habitat." So of course, a lot of things could fit under that in, um, in this fast-moving environment. If something, um, comes into, then we've recently talked about some of the difficulties, you know, that, that City of Wilsonville is facing because of the Mediterranean Oakwood. Um, if something pops into, you know, on, on our radar, something like this Environmental Impact Section 4 from our 2023, 2024, does that kind of cover, yes, we have interest in, um, ensuring protection for, for our city and, and dealing with this invasive species in, in a productive way?
Uh, yes, Mayor Counselor Akrevall, indeed, that is the case. Uh, and that's the purpose of the legislative agenda, is that just as you indicated, it's, it's broad, somewhat general. Uh, and the, the priorities list happens to be a set of things that just happen to be timely right now that we have prior policy direction on. And we just want, uh, confirmation from the council that this is indeed, uh, uh, priorities for the council.
Great, thank you.
So a quick question, is the list in, in order, as special order? Or is it just a list of all the different items?
It's, um, uh, Mayor Counselor Barry, it, it is, um, somewhat in order in that, um, the first few items are very timely. Uh, for example, the vertical housing development zone won't sunset till '26. So if we don't get it now, we've got '20, '25 to come back and try again. Uh, whereas like, if we can try to get, um, whereas recreational immunity, that's now. Uh, the, the court case has passed. We are in a, 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 a position that's not favorable in terms of our trails being open to the public, and so therefore that's a high priority here.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Um, I will, um, ask, um, I thank you for your comments, and we're over time now, so we're going to conclude our work session and reconvene for the city, the regular session at, um, seven, what, do we need seven minutes, Brian?
And Mayor, we also do have a URA meeting.
Oh, we have.
Before council.
Yeah, URA next, okay, um, at first. I'm getting some tech, uh, freezing on my screen.
I think seven, I think seven minutes is, is, uh, what we need, Mayor.
Thank you for your patience, so we will, um, reconvene at 7:25.
Thank you.
For the UR, your urban renewal meeting. Thank you.